We have one item on our agenda this evening. And so I'll make a motion to discuss and approve the transportation contract. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Capwell. I'm gonna ask Mr. Perrier if he can take us through the contract. Give us an oversight overview of the contract and we can open it up for questions, comments, and the like.
Mr. Chairman, just if you want to pause for a second, Mr. Burke got cut off when the recording came on.
Oh, okay. We lost Don.
We did. He should be joining in a second. It's a Google issue. Google's been experiencing quite the issues over the last few days, to say the least.
At least it's not the buses.
Well, I... Not like anyone would do, I don't know.
I would like everyone...
Left their radio on and killed the battery on a bus.
There we come. Vice Chair Burke, you're back.
I just came back. Yeah, I got kicked off. What happened?
Mr. Notariani tells me Google is misbehaving.
Ah.
So what I... When you left, I mentioned that I made a motion. It was made and seconded by Mrs. Capwell to discuss the trans... and the approval of the transportation contract. And I'm gonna have Mr. Perrier take us through it. So, Mr. Perrier, please.
Okay, thank you, Chairman. Thank you, School Committee, for coming together today. It's an often night. Thank you for accommodating us as we finalize this transportation contract. I guess it seems the transportation contract doesn't have the same draw as the school reopening plans, unfortunately. I did email out to everybody the transportation contract that we've been working on negotiating. Well, for twice on time now, to give you a little history. The transportation contract was actually up in the one Sockit Education Department last year, fiscal year 19. So what you have here is a contract that was based on an RFP that we did back in fiscal year... well, it was fiscal year 18, leading into fiscal year 19. So during that RFP process, it was determined that Durham was the low bidder. And we did use Durham services last year with no contract, as we all know the history here. And we understand why Durham didn't get a contract right away. So after a year of no contract, we now overthrew and began to address this. And in front of you is the final contract that we will be presenting to you this evening. The term of the contract, when we bid it out, we did bid for three years and then two optional years. One year has been removed from this, as we've already went through one year. So the contract that you'll be signing this evening is a two-year contract with two additional one-year optional terms at our discretion. To kind of talk about some of the highlights here, the contract does guarantee 180 operating days. Right now, we are on pace to meet that. So I don't foresee any problems with us having to pay any extra due to not having enough operational days at this time. There are a couple of caveats to maybe some things that might happen this year that I'd like to point out. If we do go into a hybrid model of learning, which would require no transportation for maybe one particular day a week, we would have to pay 90% of the costs associated with this contract. The way things are looking right now, though, we meet Durham every day. We meet them every day since the first day because we are running transportation throughout the district every day. So I don't see any issues at this time with that. The one thing that we did have to work on negotiating was for a full virtual model of learning rate. Now, we would go to this rate if something comes up down the road and we end up having to close school for an extended period of time. That rate, we would pay 45% to Durham of the regular cost of runs that would normally be run if school was in session. Now, there are a couple of other things with this contract. One thing has to do with the PPE. With the pandemic in full swing here, there are some PPE provisions here within this contract. It was determined that it would be best for the district to determine being in control of the purchasing of these supplies. We will work with Durham on what they need. But in the end, we'll be the ones responsible for purchasing the supplies and providing them to Durham, as opposed to Durham buying things and us reimbursing them. The other highlight has to really do with the... There is a pending dispute, and that goes back to last fiscal year. Durham is taking the position that we owe them money for the buses that weren't run last fiscal year. And that's from the middle of March to the end of the year. Just to let everybody know, we haven't paid Durham any money to that at this time. It is our position that we did not have a contract with them at the time. So we don't owe them any money. This contract doesn't do anything to address that issue. So that may be something that we're gonna need to deal with down the road, depending on how Durham wants to handle it. But yeah, other than that, this is a pretty stock contract across the board, other than those items mentioned there. Usually, this is very similar to the contract we signed with them five years ago, other than those items that we just mentioned. And then we also see Schedule A attached. This was based on the RFP, and these were the prices that we got based on the RFP last fiscal year. So there's been no changes to that Schedule A, other than the fact that we dropped off the fiscal year 19 column. So you only see four columns on that Schedule A now. Two, or the first two years that are guaranteed, and then you see the optional years as well. So really, other than that, this is what we've negotiated. And I presented to the School Committee this evening for approval.
Let me ask you, just make... Ask some questions and maybe make a comment. And then, obviously, the members of the committee may have their own questions and comments. When I look at Section 3, the change in scope of services, we talk of 180 days, but is it... Am I wrong in saying that the governor has now... We're down to 177 days by her executive order where we stand right now? I thought that's the maximum that we would have. Maybe Dr. McGee, you've got, you know, of something else. But I thought it was 177. So we're locking in three extra days for this particular year when we were ordered not to go to school for 180?
Yeah, you're correct. The students have 177 days.
So shouldn't we have like a one... This contract should say like 177 for this fiscal year and 180 days afterwards? Because it's not... It's... That's gonna be this school year. I don't know. Sarah, Brad, I know you've been working feverishly with Durham. But it's not 180-day year. It's 180-day year, right, this year. It's 177.
That's a good point. I mean, the provision that would kick in is if the number of operating days is below 180, the parties agreed to negotiate the percentage of cost per day. But we do... We are going with fewer than 180. We can certainly take it back to Durham and ask for that provision to be adjusted to reflect that change.
You know, I don't know how everybody else is gonna feel about that. It's three days. But I've got something else. Let me... Let's keep that open. When we talk about the hybrid model, let me see if I understand this correctly. We've got some children, and maybe it depends on how we look at this. We have some children that are gonna be in school Monday to Friday every week. Is that correct, Dr. McGee?
That's correct.
So there will never be a day where we don't have buses running. This does not say... It deals with where there's no transportation whatsoever, but it doesn't identify which schools, which level, which grades. Since we have... We'll always have PK, K, 1. Once 1 gets going and special ed every day, then we've got buses running every single day. So how can we be charged for any additional cost unless... Unless that was delineated in the contract that you're dealing only for those classes, those grades that won't be there every day, then, as far as I'm concerned, we don't have a day where we don't have busing.
That's correct, Mr. Chairman. I don't see any... We're running buses every day. So every day for those 177 days, we're gonna be operational for a number of buses. So we'll just be paying for the buses that we'll be using on those days.
You know, unless Durham's thinking, and Sarah, this is for you, unless Durham's thinking and saying, "Look, if we're supposed to run, I don't know, 20 buses..." So I'll say 20 buses a day. But because the hybrid situation, we could be running 15 a day for those classes that are in the hybrid mode, even though we have full-day students. If they're looking at their full complement of buses every day, then yeah, we're not gonna have them every day. But the way this reads seems to me that the hybrid situation doesn't affect this contract.
Well, I think that the... The language anticipates that there will be situations which aren't applicable now in which there would be a day or two a week when no buses are running. So I think the disconnect is that there can be hybrid situations where buses are running every day, and then there can be hybrid situations where buses are not running every day. This one... This language is designed to address a situation, and this is really to sort of benefit Durham in a way. Because what they're saying is there may be situations in which you're not running buses every single day, but we're not going to furlough our drivers because there is enough work for them to be paid to work every day of the week. And we even put in there that if for us to pay them that 90%, they must be... Actually, the drivers must be actually doing work for us, even though they're not driving the bus. So the gist of that second scenario... Or that first scenario of hybrid is that there might be a situation in which we're not running the buses every day. As a practical matter, that's not happening and not likely to happen. So that 90% payment, which benefits us, wouldn't kick in. We would be paying 100% because we are... They are running buses every day.
It's not... There's some days that aren't running all the same number of buses because on the hybrid situation, the A and B classes, you know, they go in two days. And Mondays, they have a day off.
Mr. Chairman, just to kind of clarify that hybrid situation a little more. When we began discussing this, at the time, we thought we were gonna have fully virtual days within the school calendar. And what I mean by that is Monday, there would be no transportation needs at all. And then there would be Tuesday through Friday, we would have alternating days. So really, that part of the contract was designed to take care of that situation. But we've gotten into the school year. That situation is not currently happening. We don't have that day where it's fully hybrid. So that's... To me, that doesn't really look like that hybrid model of learning clause is really, at this moment, going to be in play with what we're looking at.
Right. No, it would have to be something like a school snow day that prevents all buses from running.
Yes.
Still have distance learning. Those are the days that no buses are gonna run. In the past, I would imagine we would have paid Durham for those schools.
Well, yeah, we would make up the days. So the days would go on the end, and you'd still have 180 school days.
Got it.
So this is really not as applicable as we thought it was two weeks ago. But it could happen that we're sort of virtual for the entire school district. We just don't know. So we're trying to anticipate possibilities. And these are the two scenarios that both sides agreed could happen. And if it turns out that there is a situation in which no buses are being used for some of the week, it helps us to not pay 100%, provided that they have their drivers continuing to provide services for us.
Okay, all right. I see how that... There may be some days, like you say, that there are no buses running. But right now, everything's running, at least to some extent.
Right.
All right. So the only issue I have is that 180 days. And I don't know what we do with that because we're here to approve the contract unless we... You know, other than that, other than this, other than these three days, we could approve whatever amendments we have, if at all. Let's think about that. We still can approve the contract if there's an amendment that we're gonna agree to or they're going to agree to, especially we don't have 180 days.
If we do come below the 180, it will be up to us to negotiate that percentage that we will pay them. And right now, it's between 40 and 90%, I believe.
Right. But it's not us that's created this calendar. It's the governor.
I think what Paul is suggesting, Brad, is that they might approve it subject to that modification for this full school year because of the change in the statewide calendar. And I don't... We couldn't bring it back to them with that unless you think... Unless you'd rather not.
No, no. Actually, I think I would like to just add one more clause in to address this issue. We're gonna take care of it if it's gonna be... We're gonna have to knock three days off the contract, and we'll see what Durham's response will be. Maybe we can do that.
I mean, it wouldn't be for both of the school years. It would just be for this school year. I think we could revise it to say the agreement contemplates a minimum of 177 operating days for the 2021 year and 180 operating days for the 2122 year. And I think we could refine that just so... Because that 180 is based on state law, and that state law has been essentially rescinded or suspended, albeit not necessarily as clearly as it might be. But it clearly has been supplanted by a shorter school year. So unless, Dr. McGee, there is a plan to make up those days. Those... Because the statewide... It said 177, but you can certainly go up to 180, Dr. McGee. But you're saying that Sockit is not going to tack on an additional three instructional days or other days?
We're not, Sarah. We created the calendar based off of what RIDE sent out to districts. So no, we're not... We're not planning on adding those three days.
Okay.
Are there any... Go ahead, Sarah.
I think that Paul raises a really good point, and shame on us for not seeing it. I think it's a fair point that rather than negotiate those days because we know from the inception that we're not gonna be hitting them. And I, you know, I'd rather have that cleared up so that we know. I don't think, you know, we could approve it... You could approve it conditioned on that amendment. And if that amendment is not acceptable, then we'll take it back to the committee.
That makes sense?
I think you put it conditioned on that amendment and modification, and we could tell Durham that it was approved subject to this amendment. So, you know, I think it's a fair point that... I mean, a bit of an oversight on all of our parts, but we forgot about the dip this year. So, you know, it's... Brad, what's your thought?
I think, yeah, I think that's a fine idea. We could amend it to say 177 operating days throughout the contract. Update it like that, and then we can reach out to Durham and let them know what the committee decided. And they'll just take it forward from there. Either they're gonna approve it, and we can sign it, or they're going to wanna talk about it, and then we can bring it back another time.
Right.
We want to say 177 day... Operating days for fiscal 2021 and 180 days afterwards. So it's only this year that we're impacting. It's next year. It should be 180.
It actually kind of opens up an interesting thing there. Maybe unless mandated by the state, maybe you could put in language like that just to go forward with that, you know, for whatever reason, if something happens two years down the line and the state decided to change something, it would kind of capture it then as well.
You could make the language say that it's 177 days for this year, because we know that with certainty, and 180 days thereafter, unless the state directs a further reduction. Because I think the 180 days should bounce back unless we have another pandemic. In fact, I'm certain it would because that's, you know... That's really where the commissioner and the state would like to go, is, if anything, to increase instructional days. So I see this as a pandemic-driven problem that we can address. And I think it's worth clarifying with Durham rather than having that lingering. That's why we're bringing it to you.
Anyone else? Any member of the committee who'd like to make comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Vice Chair Burke.
Thank you. Before I get kicked off again. If the governor declares a state of emergency and closes the schools, right? So that all schools must do full virtual model of learning, would her declare a state of emergency make this contract null and void? And why do we have to pay... Why would we have to pay if the governor declared a state of emergency? And we have to not by our own choice? That's my thought.
This is the issue around the negotiations, Don. This is what was the issue. The bus companies, and it's not just Durham, have taken the position that despite the fact that they're not running buses, they are needing to maintain certain fixed costs or pay certain fixed costs and that they need to be compensated or held harmless for the impact of a pandemic because they have to keep their buses up and running or at least functional, pay for a facility to house the buses and so forth. This is a very strong bone of contention, not just between Durham and this district, but all districts and even the state and statewide transportation. So without getting into litigation issues that is not appropriate for open session, I can just say that this contract anticipates that potential and comes up with a 45% number.
Right.
But there are two ways we could have a full virtual model of learning. Like Cumberland, we can choose. Or if the state demands it, we don't choose it. It just happens. So that's just my thought.
We're not alone.
It's a good point, and that's what happened in March. You know, we were closed, and that's what, you know, is being disputed.
But we didn't have a contract in March.
No, that's a whole different story. But I mean, the situation of the closings happened. In this case, what... That's why that language has to be in this contract because they wanna make sure that they get a percentage of their cost, a percentage of the fee that they would receive. Okay. Anyone else? Mrs. Capwell?
I just wanna make sure I can come off mute. Okay. So I apologize if you guys talked about this because there was a point in time where I... Actually, two points in time, like Don, where I got kicked off. So bear with me if you guys have already addressed this. It's within respect to this section that is of the topic of conversation, which are the what-ifs. We go to a hybrid learning model. We'll pay the contractor, you know, 90%. Or then there is also the section which talks about if at any time during the year we go to the full, it's paying the contractor or Durham 45%. My first question is just out of curiosity. Did we put forth those numbers from a negotiation standpoint? Or did we start off much lower, and that's where we ended up?
The latter.
Okay. The second one is, and I wanna make sure, and this is out of somewhat of sheer ignorance, so again, bear with me. So the way in which I understand the contract and the schedule, for example, when we are starting off the school year in, you know, with limited, you know, in live or in-school learning, and then we're slowly moving towards more students coming back, are we only paying for the buses that we're using on any given day? Or are we paying for a fleet at a flat rate?
We're paying for the buses we use. Now, right now, we're using quite a few buses, just at the start of the year, as we've kind of been unsure as to who we really needed to transport early on because this all came together kind of late. So the buses are being underutilized right now. But in the next... When we get to the next phase and Phase 2, these buses are really gonna start to fill up. And I think we're gonna quickly have the opposite problem where if, based on the current RIDE guidance, these buses are going to fill up quickly, and we may need to go above and beyond what we're usually going.
Okay. And so the reason for my question is I wanted to make sure I understood when we talk about... Because we've seen so much volatility just in the last year. I just wanna make sure in always keeping in mind that there's going to be a volatile environment, per se, that when we're looking at the language and we're talking about what we'll pay, should we, you know, go to hybrid or move to full distance at any given point, I'm trying to understand what the ingoing structure is of what we were paying for, right? So if we were only paying for what we were using, and then we moved to one of those environments, is the ex... I wanna make sure that I'm reading the expectation is at that given point in time, we're only paying for the rate of which we were using the buses, not a larger expectation?
That is the expectation.
Okay.
Absolutely. You're absolutely correct in your assessment.
Thank you. And then my last question is I just wanna make sure I heard it correctly. The negotiation or conversations around their desire for us to bring forth maybe monies for what was lost when we went to full-distance learning last year? That's not... That's a future conversation, right? That's basically a gentleman's agreement that we're going to... We're just basically a handshake agreement that we're going to consider having that conversation in the future. Is that correct?
I think we're going to consider having it because there's gonna be a lawsuit coming our way. That's kind of how I'm envisioning that. There is no agreement on anything with that right now. We are staunch in our position that we owe them $0.00 and they do not agree with that position. And after these negotiations, I have no desire to go back and give them dime one about what happened last year. So that might be a legal battle.
Okay. There is a reference to that, Rebecca, in the agreement. We didn't want it. They wanted it, and we spent a fair amount of time haggling over what it means. But essentially, they are telling us that they're going to sue us.
Number 25. If you go to the contract, it's sitting right there.
So that's a future conversation that may be by way of a lawsuit.
Okay. Thank you. I don't have any other questions.
Last but not least, Mrs. Kapiskas. You must have comments.
I kind of have really just one at this point, and it kind of piggybacks off Mrs. McLennan's question, and the 2019, and I know Sarah would probably prefer we discuss this. Would we be better served to reach an agreement that we would cover that period? I realize your position is, we don't know anything. But if our exposure is 100% versus 45% under the terms of this contract, would we be better served to agree to include that period in this contract and pay it at 40%?
I really do want to talk about that.
It's not the agenda, right?
Right.
That's a piece of litigation that we should really not be talking about in open session. I'm sorry.
Okay, my position is different. My position is, you put it in the contract. So, and I just lost my connection. I'm done.
Anyone else?
It's a Google issue.
It is. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, just quickly, we've had some issues where their performance has not been 100%, correct? Is there anything in this agreement that gives us the opportunity to discuss with them the problems that we could have with some of their buses and meeting schedules and being on time? I don't know if I, I was looking through the contract, I don't know if I see that possibility. Mr. Perry here? Is it in there?
There's nothing addressing that issue in the contract at the time. No, there's not. If we were to begin to...
Talk about that.
I think we'd have to really come up with a set deep, and come up with a pretty set list of things, of requirements that we would be concerned about. And then we would have to attach a fiscal penalty to those, for whatever reason. But I think we'd have to be very specific in what we were requesting, like maybe a certain amount of minutes late. And yeah, I think we'd have to get very specific with that. And I don't know how receptive Durham would even be to those conversations.
Mr. Nutariani, maybe you can check with Mrs. Kapiskas. She got bounced out, and she's having trouble getting back on. I know it's a Google issue, but may want to touch base with her.
Yep. We also approved an option in Schedule A. There's four options.
No, they're based on a number of buses. When we put it out to bid, Durham, actually, you see the same price. It's across the board, regardless of the number of buses we're running. But the other vendor who participated actually gave us a little bit more of a break, the more buses we had. It still wasn't as cost-effective, though, to go with that vendor as opposed to Durham.
Okay.
But that's why you think of four schedule.
Okay. Is there anything else? Any other comments? Then I'll make a motion to approve the busing contract, subject to the modification that we discussed, to define that the operating year this year will be 177 days for this, for the year 2021, and will return to 180 days unless there is a crisis that's identified by the governor. Whatever the words we need to say, that's the gist of the amendment or the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Capwell. Dr. McGee, roll call.
Chairman Borger.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kapiskas.
No.
Mr. Capwell.
Yes.
Motion passes on 3 to 1. Thank you, everyone. I think, I don't think we have any other business tonight, so I'll make a motion to adjourn at 7:30, 7 PM. Is there a second?
Second.
Dr. McGee, roll call.
Chairman Borger.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kapiskas.
Yes.
Mrs. Capwell.
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. We're adjourned.
Good night, everyone.
Have a good night, everyone.
Take care, everybody.
See you.